Good evening and welcome to tonight's Homewood City Council meeting for September 28, 2020. Let me begin with tonight's meeting with a slight announcement, not slight, a significant announcement. We will have our city clerk and our assistant finance director and our assistant city clerk and finance director joining us and helping us carry through tonight's meeting by Zoom. They are joining us by Zoom due to extra precautions that the city is taking with regard to a one COVID incident that occurred in our city hall last week. That individual has been quarantined, and I don't even know if it's himself or herself, but that person has been quarantined. However, we, out of extra precaution, we have further quarantined our finance director and city clerk, who would like to state technically did not fall within the CDC guidelines to be quarantined, but we are erring on the side of caution for those two, which will make tonight's meeting a little bit challenging, to say the least. We certainly hope those two, Melody and Robert, will be, receive a green light later this week since they have gone through testing protocol, and we expect to hear about them later this week. But we're taking those precautions nonetheless, so that's why we will have our clerk and finance director joining us by Zoom. Okay, with that, we will call tonight's meeting to order, and we will begin with our invocation with Walter Jones and followed by our pledge, please.
If you'll stand and pray with me. Merciful and mighty God, as this day draws to a close, we pause to give you thanks and praise for the peace and prosperity of Homewood, for the joyful noise of the children in our schools and parks, for the comfort and safety of our senior citizens. We pray your blessings upon the police officers, the firefighters, the park and recreation workers, the street and sanitation crews, the librarians, and all the clerks and administrators who so faithfully serve the city, making it our home. We pray that you will send your spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice upon this council, along with the mayor, that with steadfast purpose, we may all faithfully serve and promote the well-being of Homewood. And may we, as a community, keep your commandments to provide for the needs of the less fortunate, show hospitality to strangers, and we think about especially the ones that are not here with us tonight. We ask all of this in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. I appreciate that. And Melody, I think you're with us, and we'll do roll call though, please.
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Mr. Waltney?
Here.
Mr. Higginbotham? I'm sorry, Mr. Tane?
Here.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Here.
Mr. Wolverton?
Here.
Mr. McCloskey?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mrs. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Wyatt?
Here.
Mrs. Andres?
Here.
And Mr. Harden?
Here.
And President Wright?
I am here. Thank you, Melody.
I get the full house in the forum.
We do. Thank you. First time I'll entertain a motion to approve and dispense with the reading of the minutes from September 14, 2020.
So moved.
By Mr. Tane, second by Mr. McCloskey. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, those minutes stand approved. We are not going to take any action on board vacancies and appointments tonight, which will get me to additions to our agenda. We actually, and this is going to be a surprise to you, Melody, we actually have another item to add, so I'll, we're going to do this on the fly for you, so hang in there. But we do have 220920, which is a request to authorize the mayor to sign updated diverging diamond agreement. This is coming to us from Wyatt Pugh with our BEZ department, and that is going to, we're going to move that to other new business for tonight. And secondly, we have 230920, which is going to be a request for consideration to restrict parking at City Hall Plaza for public safety concerns. This is coming to us from Mr. Waltney, and this will go to committee referral, public safety. And Melody, I have that written down for you if you didn't get it all with 230920, but those are the two items.
I got it, sir.
Okay, thank you. And those will be our two items for consideration to amend tonight's agenda, and so with that, I will entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Hey, we didn't use the one on the tier C. Add them on the tier C.
You didn't add that.
Yeah.
We gotta add the tier C item.
It's my mistake. I thought that was already included in the public notice.
It was in the public notice, but it wasn't put on the council agenda. I'm sorry if I missed.
Okay, great. That was why I asked. I just misunderstood the answer. Okay, so we're going to have 070420, which is a request to approve our Tier Two retirement plan to be converted to our Tier One retirement plan, which was thoroughly discussed during our budget hearings, that coming from finance, and that will be in other new business. Well, excuse me, yeah, I'm sorry.
It'll be old business.
Yeah, my mistake. We're going to put that in old business. So that's going to be 070420.
And Robert wanted to make sure, clear it on the wording there, something that was important. Do you want to say what it is?
It's actually, there will still be two separate retirement plans, but you will have a Tier One and a Tier Two with Tier One benefits. It will not be the same retirement plan going forward.
Well, he's saying there'll still be Tier One and Tier Two, but Tier Two will have Tier One benefits. He just wanted to make that clear.
Got you. Tier Two plan with Tier One benefits. Thank you. All right, so those are the three items. Thank you for all the clarification there. Do we have any others? All right, so with that, I will entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda as amended. So moved by Mr. Harden, second by Mrs. Smith. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, so tonight's agenda does stand approved as amended. All right, our consent agenda, we'll go ahead and dispose of this, and then we'll bring up some other items. Consent agenda, I will entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda by Mr. Higginbotham.
Second.
Second by Mr. Wyatt. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so the consent agenda is approved. All right, I'm going to bring out of order 070420, which we just added to tonight's agenda, which is the approval of the conversion of Tier One to Tier One benefits, if I have that explained correctly.
Conversion to Tier Two.
I'm excuse me.
Yes. The Tier Two's employees will be converted to Tier One benefits.
Tier Two to Tier One benefits.
Yes.
Did I say that wrong? All right, 070420. And I know we have thoroughly discussed this in our budget talks. I'll ask if anyone else has any comments or questions or anything about this item? If not, and Mike, will this be a resolution for this one?
Yes, sir.
All right, so we're going to, that'll be Resolution 20-125. All right, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
I'll move to approve.
By Ms. Andres, second by Mrs. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that item is approved. Thank you.
Was that 11 to zero?
Yes, it was. I'm sorry.
Okay.
All right, continuing with our old business agenda, we have 160820, which is a public hearing that was held on September 14, 2020, to consider declaring property located at 602 Shades Creek Parkway, a public nuisance due to violation of ordinances 1910 and 1750. I understand that public hearing was held and closed, and we're now looking for a report from Mr. Cook. Mr. Cook?
Yes, sir. Since the last council meeting, the property owner has gone on there and very quickly, my dad, did a great job in cleaning up the property. Sorry, I don't have the before and after pictures, but I do have the after pictures.
He did a great job.
After picture looks pretty good.
Yes, it does.
I think he did it within 24, 48 hours.
Exactly, yes.
And the neighbors are appreciative. They sent messages saying so, so I just want to thank the property owner.
Thank you, property owner. So I'll entertain a motion to drop by Mr. Tanes, second by Mr. McCloskey. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so that item is dropped. Next item, 170820, public hearing that was held on September 14, 2020, to consider declaring property located at Shades Creek Parkway, a public nuisance due to violation of ordinances 1910 and 1750.
Again, that's two lots.
That's an adjacent lot.
Okay, this is adjacent lot with the one you just, okay, but we obviously have two items on it, so I'll entertain a motion to drop on this as well.
Move to drop.
By Ms. Andres, second by Mr. Tanes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so 170820 is dropped as well. 180820, public hearing held on September 14 to consider declaring property located at 1125 Hardwick Lane, a public nuisance due to violation of ordinances 1910 and 1750. And I understand that public hearing was also held and closed, and Mr. Cook, can you give us a report on this one?
Yes, this one is owned by Howard and Chen Hugh. The gentleman, the son, you know, came up here before y'all last time, talked about what he was going to be doing there for his parents, getting it cleaned off. As you can see, on the left hand side of the driveway, a lot of that's been cleaned. You can't tell from the garage, but the garage door has now been lowered all the way to the ground. That was open. Some work has been done now in the front yard. Have not had any talk with him on when he's going to finish or his timeframe, but there has been some work done.
Okay, so some work done, some work remaining to be done.
Correct.
Do you have a recommendation for us?
Well, two things. We could either carry it over, or you could go ahead and declare the public nuisance, which I kind of hate to do because they are putting forth an effort. You know, if you do declare the public nuisance, doesn't mean I have to go on there tomorrow and start cleaning up. I can give them ample time, but good faith effort, you know, they are trying.
All right, so without objection, I think we will carry that one over. Mr. Wolverton?
I was just going to ask Mr. Cook if you've had any more contact with the family member that was here last time.
I have not.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, he had indicated that there was a multi-phase step. I think we had a pretty bad storm that came on right after he was here last time, and he said, he told us that he may not be able to have it all done, but there's going to be some pretty extensive work done, so I would also agree to go ahead and just carry it for now.
If you do carry it over to October 12, I will be on vacation on the 12th, so.
All right, and we can perhaps carry it over again. I guess I will still be here, so counting days here a little bit. I would think that would be appropriate. I would hope maybe, Mr. Cook, you could have some communication with the property owner. We're going to obviously give him some leeway to come into compliance here, and we appreciate the good faith effort on what has been done, and but my guess is hopefully by the end of October, and soon there, you know, our next last meeting there, end of October, hopefully we'll have some significant compliance you can report to us.
Yes, sir.
All right, all right, so without objection, we'll carry over 180820. Next item, 080920, public hearing for tonight to consider declaring property located at 2600 BM Montgomery Street, a public nuisance due to violation of ordinances 1910 and 1750. And this is coming to us from Mr. Cook, and we'll begin with a report from Mr. Cook.
Okay, the property is owned by William Reedus, a 412 Half Moon Ben of Birmingham. At least that's where the tax notice goes. I did get a call from a Ms. Reedus out of New York today, or actually, last Friday, I was able to return the call today. She said that they are working on finding someone to cut the grass, cut it. She apologized. She's just now being aware of the public hearing. Apparently, the other notices that I sent either didn't get delivered, or nobody drove by and saw the sign, or it got delivered and nobody referred it to maybe a family member that this needs to be addressed.
All right, can I ask you one question? We're going to open tonight's public hearing regardless, but you mentioned that the property owner, William Reedus, or where the notices were going, is from Birmingham?
Correct.
Where you had a conversation with someone from New York. Did I hear that?
Correct, a Reedus.
A Reedus.
I'm not sure relation, but same last name.
Okay, okay. All right, I'm going to go ahead and open tonight's public hearing, and thank you for the report, Mr. Cook. I will first ask, is there anyone here to speak to this item involving 2600 BM Montgomery Street? Do you speak in favor of the public nuisance item or against it? Okay. All right, seeing no one, Mr. Waltney?
After the public hearing.
I'm sorry?
After the public hearing.
Okay, I think we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing. We'll certainly look for further communication perhaps with the owner, but let me go ahead and close the public hearing, and we'll now turn it over to comments from city council. Mr. Waltney?
I was just going to add that I did speak to a friend of the owner of the property, and their person that was caring for it got sick and evidently did not relay that information to the owner of the property. They are seeking a new person, as he mentioned, to take care of the property. The person that did bring it to my attention is trying to organize some folks in the community just to go over there and do a little work on it, but.
All right, and Mr. Waltney, Mr. Cook, to the extent you all can have follow-up communications with persons.
I've got a phone number now, and they can reach out to me, yes.
We've had a public hearing. It's been open and it's closed, and I'll let the council speak to it as well. We have a property, we have folks in Birmingham and folks in New York perhaps interested in it, but my guess is the council's indulgence on this will be limited, but, and so I think what we will do is we will carry this item over for our, you won't be here October 12.
Right.
Make sure that unless the council objects, given that we've had some, I will sound described, good faith communication, we will give this property owner some indulgence as well for our meeting October 28, if I have my calendar right, to hopefully have significant progress. There won't be any more public hearings, there'll be probably public nuisance considerations at that point. All right, so without objection, I will carry over 080920 as well. That will bring us to 090920, public hearing tonight to consider declaring property located at 2900 16th Place South, a public nuisance due to violation of ordinances 1910 and 1750. And again, coming to us again from Mr. Cook, and a report from Mr. Cook.
Yes, the property is owned by Bonnie O'Bannon, same address, 2900 16th Place South. Registered letters went out, property was posted. Got no response from anybody there. The certified letter has yet to come back that it was delivered. A lot of times right now, under the certified letters, they get, they get sent back, delivered, but no signature COVID-19 written on it, which makes it usually come back quicker to me because they're not waiting on the signature, they just, so anyway, but no response, no response.
But proper notice has been fulfilled.
Correct.
Okay, all right, so we have a public hearing on this one tonight as well. I'll go and open the public hearing pertaining to 2900 16th Place South, and open it up for anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this public nuisance action or against this public nuisance action. Please come forward. Okay, seeing no one, we're going to go ahead and close this public hearing as well, and council, I will turn it over to you for, excuse me, for discussion. Mr. Tanes?
I'd just remind the council that about 18 months ago, maybe two years ago, we had to demolish a derelict garage off this property. I'm pretty sure that the vehicle that's on the property now is not operable. I haven't seen it moving many months, and at one time, the lady did make an effort to at least keep a walkway open behind the vegetation, right behind the curb, but I haven't seen it maintained in a long time now.
We're a little bit more than that.
Yep.
Yeah.
That photograph is atrocious. That's atrocious. Respectfully. That had been gone for six months.
Correct.
All right, any further comments, consideration, council?
I would move to declare a nuisance.
All right, we have an action by Ms. Smith to declare the property located at 2900 16th Place South, a public nuisance, and a second by Mr. Tanes. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so that public nuisance declaration is approved, and that will be, I lost, well, Resolution 126, 20-126. All right, thank you for that.
President Wright?
Yes, yes, Melody.
Hey, Robert and I wanted to make sure when you said something about a public hearing earlier about carrying it over, we thought you said October 28, but it would be the 26. Did we hear wrong?
Duly noted.
It is the 26.
I was trying to add 12 and 14 together.
That's why we're the candidates. That's why we're the candidates here near the council president.
You know, math is, math is one of my strong suits too, so. Okay, thank you for that, Melody, I think. 100920, public hearing tonight to consider declaring property located at 909 Forest Drive South, a public nuisance due to violation of ordinances 1910, 1750. Again, coming to us from Scott Cook with our code enforcement with our police department, and a report from Mr. Cook again.
Yes, this property is owned by Barbara and Bernard Wheeler, 909 Forest Drive South. Got this from a complaint that came in that the house appeared to be vacant and wasn't any activity around there for quite a while. Did go to the house. It did look as though no one was leaving there at the time. Of course, I tried to knock on the door, got no response. The backyard is in really bad shape, as well as the front. Since I did send out the first letter shortly thereafter and posted property, I did get a call from the owner, the, I guess the husband, the male member of the family, that said he and his son had been in an out-of-state traffic accident, and that they would be back within like a week to 10 days to take care of the yard. And since then, I cannot see anything that's been done to the property, other than there's a car there now.
Sir?
How long ago was that conversation?
Three weeks.
Okay, all right, we do have a public hearing on this tonight, so I'm going to open the public hearing and see if there's anyone here to speak in favor or against the item 100920 regarding public nuisance at 909 Forest Drive South. Please come forward. Seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and we will open it up for comments from council, just to, so three weeks ago, we had a communication. They were having some issues, but in a week to 10 days, they would hope to address it, and you've been back as recently as today or yesterday or whatever, and no, no action whatsoever.
Correct.
Okay.
And it didn't look like anybody's home.
No, there is a car that's moved, as you can see, but they're not getting back at the door.
Have you, have you, other than going to the property, I mean, is that your, is that your main mode of communication? I mean, do you have?
One of them, yes.
There's no, okay. But all forms of communication, and the communication, how did you communicate with them last time? They're at the property?
No, by phone.
By phone.
I don't know how they got the message being out of state, but apparently a neighbor said, hey, you know, or maybe they had to mail forward it, I don't know.
Okay, then no further phone communications. All right. Okay. The will of the council? Okay, so we have motion to declare 909 Forest Drive South, a public nuisance from Mr. Tanes, second by Mrs. Smith. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so that will be unanimous, public nuisance declaration for that property, and that will be Resolution 20-127. All right, next item, 120920, public hearing tonight to consider declaring property located at 1605 Wellington View Road, a public nuisance due to violation of ordinances 1910 and 1750. Again, coming to us from Scott Cook, and Mr. Cook, another report, please, sir.
Yes, I hope I'm pronouncing this right. The property is owned by the Bashirs, B-A-S-H-I-R, at 2039 Magnolia Ridge in Vestavia. First time that I went, spoke to a tenant there, I believe, about the yard. Little work was done, but very little. Grass was mowed, that was about the extent of it. Then I went, took it to the next step, sent a registered letter and posted the property, and I think the grass was mowed again. Nothing from the homeowner this time, from Magnolia Ridge in Vestavia. It still did not come into compliance. I had to send the notice of the public hearing. Apparently, that notice then went to the property manager, who called me this morning or yesterday, this morning, and left me word, telling me that things had been taken care of, and I'd already gone by and looked at it, and tried to reach her this morning. Thought I'd have a chance this afternoon to reach back out to her, so I didn't leave her a morning message, but this afternoon, I called her again and left her a message. So whoever got on the property this time and took care of it really did a good job, really, really was good.
Okay, so I was, I'm sure it was begging the question of what the violation was, so, Ms. Smith?
Well, I don't know if they have the before pictures, but it was not good. But they did, this time a professional company came, because the residents, the tenants who are living in the house could not have done this on their own, so a professional company came, and the neighbors across the street, and they actually, another house backs up to them, and both of those neighbors are satisfied with the work that's been done and are happy with it.
All right, and so with that, I don't need to open and close the public hearing, we'll be dropping to him, Mike. Okay, I think I've already been doing that. So entertain a motion to drop by Mr. Waltney, second by Mr. Harden. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So that 120920 will be dropped.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Cook. Appreciate your good work on that. 040920, public hearing tonight for consideration to work in the right of way to install a new canopy and outdoor dining area, to paint a mural on the side facade of a building facing Raleigh Avenue, and to consider sign variance, all at 709 Oak Grove Road. This is coming to us from Ash Restaurant, Mr. Rodney Cook, who's an agent for the owner, and Mr. Pugh with our BEZ department. And Mr. Pugh, I'll start, well, before I get with you, let me first begin with a report from special issues. Mrs. Smith?
Yes, the committee met last week and heard from Mr. Carnagio about the plans to make some changes on the building where Ash is a tenant, and we recommended approval of the work in the right of way pending all of the proper indemnification agreements. And that was, that was the work in the right of way. That was a four to zero motion that was made by Ms. Andres and seconded by Mr. McCloskey. And then we also voted four to zero to refer the mural and sign variance items back to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing tonight.
President Wright?
Okay, hold it a second. And, and, and I assume that included the sign variance as well?
Yes, yes.
Or maybe that's one and the same. We got them divided here.
Yes, the, the work in the right of way was approved, and then the sign variance and the mural were approved pending the public hearing tonight, and that motion was made by Mr. McCloskey and seconded by Ms. Andres. That was also a four to zero vote.
Okay, all right, thank you for that report. Mr. Wolverton, and then we'll get to you, Mr. Pugh.
I could be wrong on this, President, but I believe that the request was actually coming from the new property owner, not from any specific business. I could be incorrect on that, but.
It is coming from the property owner.
Okay, just a point of clarification.
Okay, all I have here is Rodney Cook, an agent for the owner, so I guess that's the owner, but.
The building.
Okay. Wonderful. All right, we're here.
Okay.
I've heard three people talk to me. All right, Mr. Pugh?
First of all, I must ask for your forgiveness for an oversight. It turns out that this is in the West Homewood District, and signs in the West Homewood District are not governed by the sign ordinance. They are governed by the zoning ordinance, which means requests for variance must go to the BZA. I'm sorry that we missed that on the front end, but going to have to request that you drop the sign portion. the, the sign portion.
All right.
And I will make sure that he gets to BZA.
All right, and just, just to make sure, because I'm looking, all I have here is what's in front of me, but that would include, does that include painting the mural on the side?
I would say so, yes, sir.
All right, got it, so the only item, all right, let me entertain a motion to drop all aspects of this, of this item with the exception of the work in the right of way. By Mr. Tames, second by Mr. Higginbotham. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right, so that part will be dropped. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Harden, and so that's going to be a 10-0 vote with one abstention, Melody, by Mr. Harden. All right, so that's going to leave the work in the right of way to install a new canopy and outdoor dining area and.
And yes, I apologize.
The owner, the agent, whoever you may be, you can speak in favor of this, please, sir.
I'm Richard Carnagio, I'm the architect on the project and I brought all the wrong information because I'm here about signs more than anything else. So.
Well, you are, you are apparently in the right place, let me tell you so.
Well, we're putting less back than what's there and what's there is gone, so can we do it, please?
I may have to approve.
All right, so I have a motion to approve by Ms. Andrus, second by Mrs. Smith. And before we vote, Mr. Gualtney?
Do we have any renderings? We're talking about canopy and the other furniture.
Yeah, it was just up there.
Yeah, and also, also, Mike, I had this down, I'm sorry, this is a public hearing, so I need to open a public hearing.
For the sign.
Okay. I knew that, I knew that. Okay, thank you for that. All right, so we're, we're now looking at some renderings.
And I have to say, we had dinner there Saturday night, my son and I, and it looks, I mean, the food was amazing and the paint job looks amazing and the awning is down, the old awning's down, so it's gonna look great and we're so happy that Ash is there.
I haven't seen it yet.
Yeah, it was great, it was great, it was an awesome night.
Okay, Mr. Jones, while they're looking at renderings.
So what is the, what's the timeframe for the BZA? What, walk me through that schedule, because man, we really need to.
Yes, sir, I know, I'm afraid it's gonna be the November meeting, be the first week in November, the first Thursday in November. Well, I'll be, we will work with them any way we can, if, maybe we can do partial signs.
Why aren't they meeting in October?
Why can't they meet in October?
I think it's too late for us to get the required notifications sent out, we've gotta send out, we've got notices we have to send out and there, there's a required time period for that.
Is it 21 days?
How many days, Mr. Kendrick, is it?
Yes, sir, I believe it is, it's 15 days.
Okay. I'm just trying to make it a little easier if we can. We can't, okay.
Unfortunately, there's not.
So the November meeting and then, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Gualtney, are you okay? I'm not, don't want to rush you, but you're okay? All right, we do have a motion and a second. Any further questions or discussion or need to look at some renderings? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye? Any opposed? And so that's gonna be a 10-0 with one abstention vote again. Melody, Mr. Harden, is your abstention?
Yeah, President, I got confused on this. So they dropped the, they dropped part of this, which is the sign, and what did they just move to approve, the murals or the?
We just approved the right to work in the right of way to install a new canopy and outdoor dining area.
Okay, so that was what, that was what they just made on the mural and the other part of both.
No, 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 the work in the right of way to install the new canopy and outdoor dining area, that's it. Two and three were dropped.
Okay, the mural and the sign are dropped, is what I'm guessing.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And that was a 10-01 vote with the abstention from Mr. Harden.
Got you, okay, I'm with you now.
All right, thank you, so that's gonna be, sorry, is that gonna be Resolution 20-dash 128, Mike?
Yes, sir.
All right. All right, thank you, sir. Thank you.
128.
Your colleague over there is giggling with that question, so 20 dash 128. Oh, that's right. This is COVID time, so. All right, next item, 130820, request for consideration of partial refunding of the 2012 and 2016 warrants as authorized by Resolution 20-dash 50, adopted March 30, 2020. This is coming to us from Yours Truly and Mayor McBraer. And this was carried over from council, I don't, do we have any updated report from finance, Mr. Jones?
No, sir, Mr. President, the, this was carried over from other new business. And Mr. Dunn is here tonight, if there are any questions.
Oh, great.
Yeah.
All right, so Mr. Dunn.
Steefel.
With Steefel is here. I know there's been communications about this. I will tell you, Mr. Wyatt, if, I know you've been involved in this and I have too, but I would appreciate maybe if you can help let us know if you have the items in front of you.
Sure.
I may be throwing you off guard a little bit.
No, no, you're good.
What we have here and certainly Mr. Kendrick is here to help as well, much less Mr. Dunn from Steefel.
So what we're looking at here is a refinancing of a, of the 2012 bonds and a portion of the 2016s that would provide the city with somewhere, depending on where, where it is on the date of the sale, somewhere around four or five million dollars, which would be. Four million plus.
We're not gonna net five.
Well, four million plus. And that would be money that would be unrestricted, that could certainly help the city in these uncertain times, given what we're looking at with the economy and I think would provide us with some security moving forward over the course of this year. So I would recommend, certainly if anyone's got any questions for Mr. Dunn, he, he will have better answers than me, but based on what we have been able to do and ascertain, I think that this would be a good item for the city and would help us over the course of the next year and that we should move forward with it.
Now, Mr. Dunn, you're here, I, I think we ought to take advantage of you to maybe get this, maybe a little explanation as to the timing of this.
Sure.
And the nature, we, we all do our best with all of the finance rates going up and down, you live in the, in the bond market world and perhaps you can share some of that as to why this is a good time to move now.
Absolutely, appreciate the opportunity to be here. As noted earlier, this dates back many months, everybody knows, pre-COVID, we had extraordinarily low interest rates and at that point in time, the refunding looked like it made a lot of sense. And when COVID kind of blew up the financial world, rates went up and the refunding savings went away. So several months later, we now are at historically low interest rates. In August, we hit the lowest rate ever for tax-exempt bonds and the 10-year Treasury set a new record in August. These bonds are taxable, advanced refundings of the 12s and the 16s are part of the 16s. And opportunities like this, when, when the market offers the opportunity and the window opens, you need to try to get through it as quickly as you can. So the timing is no more than, as rates came back and were attractive and again, the refunding made sense, we got to work on this in August, pulling everything together. During the last several weeks, we have gone to the rating agencies, we've gotten the ratings confirmed at very attractive levels, your ratings were affirmed, AA+ S&amp;P, AA2 Moody's. Your staff did a great job with the rating agencies and very positive things were said. But we have now come to the point where we are in a position to sell bonds and the sooner we can lock in interest rates, the sooner you will have a known quantity of savings. As we're approaching elections, the market tend to be volatile. There is a lot of supply in the market because of these low interest rates. Issuers are pushing to get deals done as quickly as possible and we would expect that volume would increase over the next several weeks. Nobody can predict what happens on the elections and nobody can predict who wins what that does, but we have a known quantity right now and the known quantity is very attractive savings. The refunding has been structured in a way that keeps your annual debt service payments the same and we size the deal up to provide cash at closing. So the four million plus number would be available for capital projects and for other uses actually, because this is a taxable bond issue, so it's really unrestricted and more flexible than tax-exempt financing. I think that's the summary.
I think it's very helpful, I don't know if any other questions, I mean, and I hate to be so simplistic about this, but it's almost akin to refinancing your house and creating cash and, and, and that, creating cash, again, all for discussion with the council, frankly, for next fiscal year to help, help the council and the uncertainties that will help us as the, the pandemic, I suppose, continues in some shape, form or fashion, but.
You should lower your interest rates by about 200 basis, 2% over a year. The bonds we're refunding are 494 and we would expect the rates on this to be less than 3%, so about 2% lower in your interest rates.
Great, all right. Any further questions? Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I'd just say that it's, it's been interesting over the years, being on ratings calls, because you, you do learn a lot about the city and what we have to offer and the concerns that the ratings agencies have. And all the ones that I've participated in have, have, have been so positive in terms of Homewood and kind of where we are from an economic standpoint and from a financial standpoint and, and being good stewards of, of the budget. And so I'm, I'm happy that, that we got the report that we did. It's, it's one of the top in the state, so we're proud that, that S&amp;P and Moody's see that in us and you can, you can certainly read their report, there's, there's, the summary is really strong in terms of what they feel about the, you know, the future. But I, I think this is the time to do it, I mean, there, we looked at this in March, remember, you know, I think we put it on the agenda in February and then COVID hit the next month, you know, so it, it was not a good time, but we, we kind of waited it out and, and looked for you for guidance as to when the, when the window would be open and so I think we need to act on this pretty quickly and I think it gives us a lot of flexibility with the funding.
Interestingly, did, did COVID help the rates?
Well, you know, what's happened is initially, the market came to a standstill, you really couldn't even sell bonds in March and April. And then as the, we moved along, the lower interest rates have, the Fed trying to cushion the economy certainly has lowered the interest rates and that has also lowered long-term interest rates on both Treasuries and tax-exempt. So from that standpoint, yes.
Got you.
It actually did.
And ironically, short-term rates aren't doing the same thing really, but long-term is. Yeah.
All right. All right, any further questions? Mr. Dunn, while he's up here? All right, thank you, sir. Any further questions or comments, counsel?
I do think this is an important thing that we look at, just, I mean, it's, it's a little bit of an opportunity cost of doing it now versus waiting, but, but we don't know where the rates are gonna be in six months or two months. And if it, if the opportunity is there, and we've all looked hard at it, we've had meetings about it, it's complex, but, but I think that it makes sense to move forward on it.
And creating, you know, surplus of four million dollars cash is no small benefit for the city, so. Okay. All right, I entertain a motion for action on this item.
Move to approve.
By Mr. Tames.
Second.
Second by Mr. Wyatt. Mr. Kendrick, before we vote?
We have to have a, this is an ordinance that would authorize this, so I.
Oh, excuse me, all right, I didn't have that in my instructions here. All right, sir, if we can, first reading, sir?
Yes, an ordinance to authorize issuance of not exceeding $50 million in principal amount of taxable general obligation warrant series 2020. It's a lengthy ordinance, I'll try to summarize it without putting it to sleep, but it spells out all the steps and processes that are required in order to authorize the execution of certain warrants, when and if they're sold, based on certain terms. The first section is definitions and phrases. Article two deals with representations and findings and warranties. Article three deals with authorization of the warrants. Section 3.02 deals with amount of the warrants and the terms. These will not exceed $50 million and they have a maximum interest rate. The next section deals with the form of the warrant that's set out in the ordinance that would be if, if in fact they're sold under terms acceptable to generate the savings that's been anticipated. Section 3.04 deals with the execution, registration and often, the authentication of the warrants. 3.05 deals with a temporary warrant. 3.06 deals with registration, transfer and exchange of the warrants. Section 3.07 deals with mutilated, destroyed, lost and stolen warrants. Section 3.08 deals with payment of interest on warrants, interest rights preserved. Section 3.09 deals with persons deemed owners of the warrants. Section 3.10 deals with the paying agent, registrar of the warrants. Section 3.11 deals with the payments due on a day other than a business day. Section 3.12 deals with the cancellation of warrants. Section 3.13 deals with book entry only system and payment provisions relating to the warrants. Article four deals with representations, now, excuse me, redemption of warrants. 4.01 deals with the general applicability of the article. Section 4.03 deals with election to redeem and notice to the paying agent. Section 4.03 deals with a subsection, selection of paying agent of warrants and redemption. Section 4.04 deals with a notice of redemptions. Section 4.05 deals with deposit of redemption price. Section 4.06 deals with the warrants payable on redemption date. Section 4.07 deals with the warrants redeemed in part. Article five deals with the source of payments. Section 5.01 deals with general obligations. Section 5.02 provisions for payment of the warrants. Article six deals with a warrant fund. Section 6.01 deals with a warrant fund that finds it. Section 6.02 deals with the transfer of funds. Section 6.03 deals with security for the warrant fund. And section zeros, 6.04 deals with the investment of warrant funds. Article seven deals with the sale and delivery of the warrants. 7.01 deals with the sale of the warrants supporting the bond council. Section 7.02 deals with official statement and closing papers. Section 7.03 deals with the application of the proceeds, redemption of the 2012 warrants and the refund of series of 2016 warrants. Section eight deals with miscellaneous provisions that relate to the transaction. Section 8.01 deals with amendments of description of us, uses of warrant proceeds. Section 8.02 deal is reserved. Section 8.03 agreement to pay attorney's fees. Section 8.04 provisions of warrant, of ordinance of a contract. Section 8.05 deals with separability clause. Section 8.06 deals with a notice to warrant holders and waivers. Section 8.07 repeal of conflicting provisions. Section 8.08 deals with effects of headings and table of contents. And section 8.09 deals with the effective date. In conjunction with this authorization, I forwarded to you the preliminary official statement and a escrow agreement that's referred to in this agreement that would control the process of the transaction until the issue of the official statement after the sale of the warrants.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kendrick. Since we, so I'll entertain a motion for unanimous consent on this item from Mr. Wyatt.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gualtney and roll call vote, Ms. Melody, please.
Okay, Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Tames?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Oh, Melody, did we lose you?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear, did Mr. Higginbotham answer?
Yes, he did.
Well, I, I. Did he say yes?
He did, yes, I've said yes.
I'm sorry, I, it, we just, it just faded out. Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
Did she say yes?
I did, yes, sorry, yes.
Sorry, yes.
Sorry, I can't, I'm sorry. Mr. Harden?
Yes.
And thank you, got you. President Wright?
Yes. So that is 11 to 0 vote on, for unanimous consent. And now we can take up the item itself. I'll entertain a motion for approval. By Mr. Wyatt, a second by Mr. Thames, and it'll be another roll call vote, Melody.
This is ordinance 2783.
I'm sorry, ordinance 2783, thank you.
So I need y'all's cheerleader voices on. Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Did he say, his microphone must not be working. He say yes?
He did.
Yes, okay, I'm sorry. I just can't hear anything. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
And Mr. Wright?
Yes. That is another 11 to 0 vote, and so ordinance 2783 stands approved. So thank you all.
And President Wright, that's my bad. I didn't get a chance to, because I went in the office to check the documents Mr. Kendrick sent with that, so we put resolution on your thing instead of ordinance. I apologize. That's my fault.
Absolutely, no apology necessary.
And Mr. Higginbotham, we'll check your microphone, see if something might be wrong with your microphone.
Not, thank you, Melody. No apology necessary. 140720 is our next item, request to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with Capital ATMs to install and service an ATM at no cost to the city at the Public Safety Building. And I think we are, I have down here a report from Finance, Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I'm going to try to keep all these together here, all these reports, so you're going to hear a lot from me tonight. I apologize. The Finance Committee met on September 21st and voted 4 to 0 to recommend approval pending Mr. Kendrick's review of the contract.
All right, so, and I'm sorry, what was that vote on?
Four to 0.
Four to 0. So favorable vote coming out of Finance for the new ATM service at the Public Safety Building. All in favor? I'm sorry, excuse me, I'm sorry, before we vote, Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. When we had voted on this item in committee, I had requested that we, that the folks who worked on putting the item together would share with me just examples of some of the places these ATMs existed, and I hadn't heard anything. Do you have that tonight? The other ATMs by this particular vendor was what I was interested in, other places?
I have not received anything regarding other places that Capital ATMs
Do you know Ms. Salter?
Melody, have you heard anything?
I think we lost Melody.
Okay.
I think it was Melody's line the whole time.
It's probably my mic that did it. Right, right. Well, as I mentioned in Finance, Mr. President, if it's okay, let me continue. This is something we do not have in the courts. There's no cost to the city, but, you know, we can certainly carry it over for that information. Certainly, you know, want to make sure that you get all the information you need.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not going to hold this up tonight. I would still appreciate the information. I feel reasonably comfortable, given what we were told in Finance about the vendor, that we should have a good experience. I just, I would still appreciate a list of some other places, just so I can get kind of a broad idea of where else they have ATMs, you know, wherever that may be.
Okay.
But I don't want to hold it up tonight.
Okay, well, and no problem. And Mike, I would just urge you, just because we are having communication challenges tonight, to follow up with Melody or Robert and/or Mr. Morgan, who I think
I'll email him and make sure he gets you that.
Be helpful to get those questions answered. But notwithstanding that, we'll go ahead and go ahead and vote. We do have a favorable vote coming out of Finance. So with that, any further questions or discussion? All right, again, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, that's going to be 11 to 0 vote, and Mike, that'll be Resolution 20-129, I have?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, sir.
She's coming back in now.
Okay, great.
I'm sorry, we lost that connection. I made the phone call last Friday to get that information about other vendors and other suppliers, and with all the activity and phone around here, I, he may have called me back. If he did, I did not receive the call, and I have not followed up on that. So, Mr. Gubotham, no, I do not have that information like I told you that I would get.
All right, thank you, Robert. We're still going to press forward, and let's still retrieve that information as needed from Mr. Higginbotham and others. So thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
And just, Melody, just so you got it, that was 11 to 0 vote favorable for Resolution 20-129.
Yes, sir. And Robert needs to provide, just Robert to information, is that what it is?
Right, we need to find out if other people have a dispossessment, and she can see that something.
Hey, I will say Jeremy Love is a contact person. I think it is a relatively new company. I did talk to him about that. I don't know how long they've been in business, but we will try to find out how many companies they do, but I do believe it's a relatively new company.
All right, thank you for that. Next item, 230820, request to consider updates on West Oxmoor Lane Rewidening. This is coming to us from Mr. Pugh and Berkeley Squires, and I have down here a report from Finance, Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met on the 21st again, and this was part of the budget hearings as well, but it was originally $300,000, and so the committee met, voted 4 to 0 to recommend approval, funding of $10,000 for engineering and design for that project, and also a budget of $200,000 for right-of-way agent to begin work, and that, and we also have the 80/20 match as well.
Okay, all right. So that was essentially handled in the budget. Mike, do I need a resolution for this?
No, sir.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and do a favorable vote, just for the record. That's coming out of Finance with Finance Budget Committee with a favorable vote. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, so that will just stand as approved without a necessary resolution. Next item is 240820, which is a request to make changes to the city's resolution regarding the city contributions to retiree insurance and to add a monthly stipend for both single and family retiree insurance in order to help the city keep their preferred rate. This is coming to us from our Mayor McBrayer, and I know you guys have been dealing with this in budget, and so Walter, I'll turn it over for another report from Finance.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I hope this doesn't make your head spin, but the committee met, voted 4 to 0 to recommend referring this to budget hearings, and then budget hearings took it and recommended 5 to 0 to send it back to Finance for working on that issue within the October timeframe.
All right, so without objection, I think, Mike, I don't need a resolution on this either to send it back to Finance. So without objection, we're going to send item 240820 back to Finance Committee for appropriate consideration of these insurance matters. All right, next item, 050920, request to consider paying bonuses to employees if the city completes the fiscal year on 093020 with a budget surplus, which I will say looks quite likely. This is coming to us from our mayor and our finance director and city clerk, and we will also have a report from Finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The committee voted 4 to 0 to recommend referring this to budget hearings, and then within budget hearings tonight, voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval, and I'll just mention that one more time, this is a grossed-up number based on years of service. It goes from $350 all the way up to $2,000 for 20-plus years of service, and again, it's a grossed-up number contingent upon a budget surplus for the fiscal year.
Got you. So this is an employee bonus under a staggered schedule being approved favorably out of Finance. Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? And Mike, do I need a resolution on this one?
Yes, ma'am.
Got you. Thank you, sir. All right, so we'll have Resolution 20-130. Next item, 060920, request to authorize Jetty Trip to video stream via Zoom the remaining budget meetings of the Finance Committee and to amend our budget for these services that have been provided during our budget process. This is coming to us from our Finance Chairman, Mr. Jones, and we'll begin with a report from Finance on this as well. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The committee met, voted 4 to 0 to recommend approval of funding of $3,250 from contractual services, so 4 to 0 out of Finance.
All right, so it's another favorable vote out of Finance to amend the budget for Jetty Trip. Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? And that will be Resolution 20-131. Next item, 150920, report from Meredith Drennan to update our Chamber of Commerce activities, and she essentially gave a update and report to our Finance Committee. This ultimately came to us from our counselor, Alex Wyatt, and Mr. Jones, I'll let you give us a report if you want to sum up briefly what occurred with that update.
Well, it was a great, it was a great update, just on all the activities that they've been going through, especially tough during this time, but they've been real creative with how they have continued to promote commerce within the city. So the committee voted 4 to 0 to recommend accepting the report from this Drennan.
All right, so it's a favorable vote coming out of Finance to accept the report from the Chamber of Commerce. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, so we will affirmatively accept that report. All right, that's going to get us to our budget for tonight, which is a number of mini budgets within our big budget, and we will take these up one at a time, and so this will be 220820, which is, began with a presentation from our mayor for the fiscal year 2020, 2021, proposed budgets for general, capital, debt service, and special revenue funds. And, Mike, we will take these one at a time?
Yes, sir.
And these can all be by voice votes, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we will take our general fund budget first, and a report from Finance, Mr. Jones?
Okay, and traditionally, if you'll indulge me, I did want to make a few comments about the budget.
So indulge, sir. Please proceed.
Okay, okay. So I want to start off thanking Mr. Higginbotham, Mrs. Smith, Mr. Harden, Mr. Thames, and all the other members of Council who participated in the budget hearings. This was well-attended by everyone, and I appreciate all the work that you, that we have done as a committee. You know, sometimes we just say we had a lot of meetings, but I'm going to tell you, we met on September 8th, on the 10th, the 15th, the 17th, the 22nd, the 24th, and today. And we covered a lot of grounds. Some of the meetings were two hours, some of them were a little bit less, but I feel like we accomplished a lot, we learned a lot. There were lots of difficult decisions that we had to make as it related to capital projects we worked on, and some of these are not directly involved with the budget, but they really affect the budget in futuristic ways, and that would be the Tier 2 conversion and the employee bonuses, which we discussed, and then the health insurance for the active employees and for the retirees. Looking at the budget overall, we're taking carryover fund balance down to 1.794, so we basically cut from the general fund $1,443,153. So that was the cut from general fund, lots of help from department heads and creativity throughout the city to look at ways that we could cut funding and be creative with that. So also, we looked at capital, and we looked at ways that we could potentially be creative in our funding, and so we met with Aldott, and I appreciate all the work in getting that, our funding for the Diverging Diamond, which is a very, very important project for the city, taking that down into two payments over two years. So that was helpful as well. So overall, ironically, we cut capital by about the same amount, 1.4 million.
And, Mr. Jones, not to interrupt, just how critical that was to cut that payment in half for this upcoming fiscal year. I mean, that was just, so hats off to however that happened.
Yes, yeah, it was, and so, you know, we, if we had our way, we would approve everything that was proposed by department heads and also for the capital projects, but we, unfortunately, were not able to, so the Turkeyfoot project, you know, is proceeding, we just cut that down, you know, but we're going to continue to work on that. So there are lots of things that we're continuing to address. Also, I want to mention, the city is going to absorb the entire 5.5% health insurance premium, so that's definitely something that we're not passing on to the employees. We're taking that over. We approved merit increases across the board. And I just want to mention, we talked a lot about different areas and what makes Homewood unique, and sometimes it comes out in different ways, but if you look at the number of employees we have, if you compare us to Vestavia, we have twice the amount of employees. So the reason for that is because what we deliver to residents. This subject comes up a lot, and the first time I moved to Homewood, you know,
You brought it up.
27 years ago, we have brought it up, but, you know, I had no idea, we had, you know, somebody would come into your backyard and go get, bring your trash to the street, and that sounds like something small, but, you know, in a city like Vestavia, you know, you gotta, you gotta take your trash to the street and the bins, and it's outsourced, but we don't do that here. Now, that doesn't mean that we won't do it in the future, but I'm just saying, we deliver a lot to our residents, and our residents appreciate that, and sometimes that cost is hard to compare to other cities. And so we talked a lot about that, and we talked about the Tier 2 conversion, and, you know, we came to the conclusion that we don't want to be in any position where we're not competitive, but I still believe in my heart that Homewood is a great place to live, to work, to serve the residents, because we provide something that's very unique, you know, and to our residents. And I just want to say that, it's been on my mind, that, you know, sometimes I say I'm too tight with the budget and everything, but I want us to continue to be a strong city for generations to come. So with all of that, we passed all the budgets, and we'll go through each one, but they're all pretty much 5 to 0 approvals for all the funds that we'll go through. And anybody on the committee that wants to say anything, I've been talking too much, so.
Not at all, Mr. Jones. Any other comments from you hard-working Finance Committee members?
I just want to thank Mr. Jones, because every year, I'm so impressed by how he manages this process, because it is not easy, and this year particularly, it was not easy, but he always manages to focus on the positive, which I love, and we always end up getting it done. And we know there's lots of good things to come, but the way that he manages this process, which is a very difficult and complex one, is to be committed.
I want to echo that.
Mr. Harden, please.
I'm new on the Finance Committee, and I just want to echo that, because it's, he's always prepared, it's a lot of work, it's unbelievable how much work the Finance Committee is, and you just feel like you have a total professional running the committee, and I don't know how we could do it without him, truthfully, so I'm so glad he got re-elected.
I'm glad you got re-elected. Can I add one more thing?
Please, Mr. Jones.
And it goes without saying, and, you know, we forget, since they're not sitting in front of us, but sitting in front of us, but, I mean, Ms. Salter put hours in, into this, and I almost say she put her heart and soul in this, and then, and Mr. Burgett, as our Finance Director, and it was a team effort, but both, both you, Robert and Melody, are to be commended for, for really going above and beyond, because I certainly bugged you a lot, to, to pull information together, and it was a lot, and I really appreciate all the work that you've put into, into the budget. So thank you, Robert and Melody.
Thank you. Thank y'all.
Thank you, and I will add, Mayor, I've been here for 10 years, and I always appreciate, yes, we know, Robert and Melody, or you're not an accounting expert, but by golly, you have made it a priority all of your years, and I'm very grateful for that. I'm really grateful, because I know what those budgets looked like before that 10-year period, and, well, maybe a little bit longer. So thank you for that, that service and that priority, sir.
Well, and I, I would also say too, to Mr. Harden, before, there was a melody, his finance meetings wasn't that easy. There was a lot of friendship lost over that.
In fact, you, in fact, you endured a few of those, if I'm not mistaken, sir.
So they've done a great job, and thank you all.
Absolutely. All right, thank you all. Any other comments? All right, so with that, we will start the process of going through these budgets, Mr. Kendrick and Melody, and we'll begin with the general fund budget with a report from Finance, Mr. Jones.
Five to zero approval.
All right, so this will be Resolution 20-132, favorable vote out of Finance. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that's 11 to zero. Next is our grants fund budget, report from Finance, Mr. Jones.
Five to zero to approve.
All right, five to zero, favorable vote. That's going to be Resolution 20-133, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. That's 11 to zero. Next is going to be our 7-cent gas tax budget, report from Finance, Mr. Jones.
Five to zero to approve.
All right, that's a favorable vote for Resolution 20-134, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 11 to zero. Next is our 4 cents and 5 cents gas tax budget, report from Finance, Mr. Jones.
Five to zero to approve.
All right, this will be for Resolution 20-135, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 11 to zero vote, Ms. Melody. Next is our Board of Education Trust Fund, report from Finance, Mr. Jones.
Five to zero to approve.
Thank you, sir. This will be for Resolution 20-136, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 11 to zero vote again, Ms. Melody. Debt Service Fund 11, report from Finance, Mr. Jones.
Five to zero to approve.
All right, so this will be for Resolution 20-137, favorable vote out of Finance, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So it'll be Resolution 20-137. Next is our Capital Projects Fund, report from Finance, Mr. Jones.
Five to zero to approve.
All right, the Resolution 20-138, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 11 to zero vote, Ms. Melody. And Environmental Escrow Fund 13 Budget, report from Finance, Mr. Jones.
Five to zero to approve.
All right, five to zero vote out of Finance for Resolution 20-139, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is our Insurance Fund 14 Budget, report from Finance, Mr. Jones.
Five to zero to approve.
All right, favorable vote out of Finance, Resolution 20-140, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 11 to zero vote for that as well. E-911 Budget, report from Finance, Mr. Jones.
Five to zero to approve.
Favorable vote out of Finance for Resolution 20-141, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that's 11 to zero vote again, Ms. Melody. Corrections in Jail Budget Fund 21, report from Finance, Mr. Jones.
Five to zero to approve.
Favorable vote out of Finance for Resolution 20-142, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, 11 to zero vote again. Corrections Court Budget Fund 22, report from Finance, Mr. Jones.
Five to zero to approve.
Favorable vote out of Finance for Resolution 20-143, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 11 to zero vote. Next is Court Special Budget Fund 24, report from Finance, Mr. Jones.
Five to zero to approve.
I'm getting used to it by now.
Yeah, yeah.
This is Resolution 20-144, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Our Inspection Technology Fund 25, report from Finance, Mr. Jones.
Five to zero to approve.
Favorable vote out of Finance, this will be for Resolution 20-145, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 11 to zero vote again, Ms. Melody. And for our GOW 16 Construction Fund, Fund 26, report from Finance, Mr. Jones.
Five to zero to approve.
It's a favorable vote out of Finance, and this will be for Resolution 20-146, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And lastly, our Judicial Administrative Fund 28, report from Finance, Mr. Jones.
Five to zero to approve.
That's a favorable vote out of Finance for Resolution 20-147, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's 11 to zero vote again, Ms. Melody. All right, so thank you all. Budgets do stand approved. That's going to get us to our amended Committee referral agenda. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Mr. President.
Excuse me, for the, on the, are you on Committee referral?
Yes, sir.
Okay, please, Mr. Cobb.
If, if I may, item 180920, about putting signs up on 18th Street, where newly constructed parking is. The rest of 18th Street is signed three-hour limit parking.
Right.
And what's happening, the only business we got over there open right now is DaVinci's, which has been here 40-plus years. And my intention of open, using that was to help them, because we're kind of killing them during construction. And what's happening now is all the construction workers are parking there early in the morning and staying all day. They were there at 6:30 this morning. There wasn't a single space available before 7 o'clock, and they're still there till 3, 3:30 in the afternoon. So I would ask if we could pull this out for unanimous consent vote tonight to go ahead and put up the time limit signs of three hours, what was agreed on, and Mr. Kendrick may know different than that, I'm not sure, but that was, my understanding was, it's like the rest of 18th Street, I believe, is three hours limits. If we could do that, where we could get Randy to go ahead and put up the signs and let the businesses have the use.
All right, help me with a little bit procedural, Mike. Do we unanimous consent to pull it off Committee referral and to put it on to other new business?
Yes, sir.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion to pull 180920 off of Committee referral. But I tell you what, do I need to approve the agenda first, Mike? I probably should do that, shouldn't I?
Yeah.
We have, we have voted.
Yeah.
But, yeah, let's, let's approve the Committee referral agenda as amended first. I'll entertain a motion for approval by Mr. Thames, second by Mrs. Smith, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, now I will entertain a motion to pull 180920 off of the amended Committee referral agenda and on to other new business. I'll entertain a motion for that.
So moved.
By Mr. Waltney. Second by Mr. Thames, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And now we'll go ahead, if I may, bring up 180920, which is, I'm going to read it, request for consideration to place signs to limit the hours of parking on the east side of 18th Street between 28th Avenue and Rosedale Drive. This is coming to us from Mr. Cobb. And first I'll ask if there's any questions or discussion? Yeah, Mrs. Smith.
I'm just wondering, can we also talk to?
CBNA.
Yeah, the construction company, and let them know that.
CBNA is our contract, they're not on the job.
Yeah.
The hotel contractor is supposed to, by the development agreement, provide its own parking. So certainly you can address that.
Yeah, I was about to say, certainly we can have a communication with them, and additionally putting up signs, because sometimes people will want more signs.
We're not going to just put up signs, we're going to adopt an ordinance that, that makes it a penalty.
I'm just saying, we should have a discussion with them as well, because they should prove their faults anyway, regardless of that.
And I will tell you, there's probably a dozen subcontractors on that site that, you know, in the end Robbins Morton oversees them, but they probably, they're probably not their employees.
Right.
All right, all right, so Mike, you mentioned this would be an ordinance, so we're going to have to get a first reading unanimous consent on this?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, let's begin, so we don't take any votes here, let's begin first with first reading, sir.
It's an ordinance to further regulate public parking on the east side of 18th Street South, between intersection of 18th Street South with 28th Avenue South and 18th Street South and Rosedale Drive in the City of Homewood, and to provide penalties for the violation thereof, ordained by the City Council as follows. It shall be unlawful for any person, firm, corporation, or association to park, cause to be parked, or permitted to be parked any motor vehicle as defined in the Highway Code of the state of Alabama, on and along the east side of 18th Street, between intersection of 18th Street with 28th Avenue South and 18th Street with the Rosedale Drive in the city for longer than three consecutive hours. Section 2, the Chief of Police is authorized and directed to install signs, appropriate markings, and limited parking signs at the places described in Section 1 above. Section 3, the violation of this ordinance upon conviction will be punished as provided by ordinance Section 1-8 of the Code of Ordinances. Section 4, if any part of provision or ordinance declared to be unconstitutional or invalid by according to competent jurisdiction, all other parts of provision remain in full force and effect. Section 5, the provisions or ordinance shall become effective immediately upon passage and approval by the mayor and the City Council of the City of Homewood, or it's otherwise becoming law.
All right, thank you, sir. I'll entertain a motion for unanimous consent.
So moved.
By Mr. Harden, second by Mrs. Smith, and roll call vote, Ms. Melody.
Okay, Mr. Waltney?
Yes, ma'am.
That was a yes.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Thames?
Yes.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
And Mr. Jones, and then Mr. Wright, sorry.
I'm sorry, you meant Mr. Harden.
Yes.
Sorry, Harden, Mr. Harden, and then Mr. Wright.
And that's a, that's a yes from me as well, for approval of unanimous consent. I will now entertain a motion for approval of the item itself. Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. McCluskey, and roll call vote again, Ms. Melody.
All right, Mr. Waltney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
And President Wright?
Yes. All right, so that is, item is going to, that ordinance is going to stand approval, ordinance 2784. And thank you, Mr. Cobb, for bringing that to our attention, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we'll continue with our other items and other new business. Next item is 190920, which is a request for consideration of a change order to remove from the 18th Street project contract the installation of landscaping in front of the Valley Hotel, this is coming to us from Keith Strickland with Goodwin Mills, and Wyatt Pugh, and Greg Cobb with our BEZ Department. And I tell you what, just because it's, and I had to get some questions answered, and Brett, I know you answered this for me, I appreciate it. If you could explain, if anyone else wants to speak to it, please do, because it sounds like we're taking landscaping out, and that's a little misleading.
The Valley Hotel actually wanted to, more mature trees installed in front of the actual property that had been planned, and so they agreed to take on the expense of installing the landscaping in front of the project itself, so they could install more mature trees.
All right.
At their cost, so that there's no cost to the city. In fact, it's removing the cost of that.
Are you ready for some football? Enjoy a match.
Think we got busted.
Good job, good job, Brian.
Good job.
This is actually a cost reduction of $6,650.
Thank you, sir. I didn't.
We like those change orders.
Yes, all right, so $6,650, basically, to the credit, I guess, of the developer of taking on this landscaping project himself, so they can be done with more mature trees, as I understand it. So any further questions or discussion on that? I will entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
By Mr. Waltney, second by Mr. Wyatt, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that's going to stand approved as Resolution 20-148, if I have it correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. 200920, request to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with Lexus Nexus, this is coming to us from Lieutenant Keith Peterson. And as I understand, this is a budgeted item, simply authorizing the signing of the contract for this Lexus Nexus contract. Any questions or discussion on this one? All right, I entertain a motion for approval.
Second.
By Ms. Andrews.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harden, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that's going to be, actually be a 10 to zero vote, Ms. Melody, Mr. Thames did step out for that one, okay?
Okay, thank you.
210920, request for consideration of approval of the vouchers for the period of September 15, 2020 through September 28, 2020. This is coming to us from our Finance Directors and City Clerks. And Mr. Higginbotham, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I came in Saturday and reviewed the vouchers in question, found nothing of concern to me, so I'm going to move the item.
All right, so that is a motion for approval for Mr. Higginbotham for approval of the vouchers through September 28, 2020. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Jones.
And also have discussion.
And yes, I will open it for discussion and questions as needed, sir.
Well, for us, for the record, Mr. Higginbotham has a tear in his eye. This is the last time he is ever going to have to review vouchers from the City of Homewood. And I want to personally thank him for his years of service, and it's not easy, and I appreciate you doing that in all seriousness.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it. Absolute, absolute. Mike, thank you for doing that.
I always hated to miss my Saturday cartoons, but I knew it was important, so I was there.
Well.
And for Dr. Jones, he gets the hard, I was going to say semester, but the hard
Quarter. I'll get the next, I'll get the next quarter.
He has to do two fiscal years.
Yeah, that's right, that's right. I'll get the next quarter.
And all jokes aside, all of those who have gone through that process know, it is, it is a chore. And it's really a chore that our city does, and I would dare say, not many cities do that. I haven't done a poll myself, but I would doubt many council members rotate looking at every single expenditure of a city. And that is something that I think we're due to be commended, and for this most recent experience, Mr. Higginbotham is due to be commended. So thank you for that, and we have a motion and for approval, and a second by Mr. Jones, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that, those vouchers will be approved through September 28, 2020. That'll be Resolution 20-149.
Is it still 10 to zero, is Mr. Thames still out?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, thank you. That was 11 to zero, Melody, thank you.
Thames back, thank you.
I'm sorry, Mike?
I believe it's 150.
All right, did I miss one?
Yes, so the Lexus Nexus was 148, nine.
Ah, you're correct. All right, so that'll be 20-150. Thank you, sir. All right, next item, 220920, request to authorize the mayor to sign updated diverging All right, next item, 220920, request to authorize the mayor to sign updated diverging diamond agreement, this coming to us from Mr. Pugh. Um, do we need any further questions or discussion on this? I'll entertain a motion for approval. By Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Waltney, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? And that will stand approved, Resolution 20-151. Ladies and gentlemen, that brings us to the end of our agenda, and for announcements, uh, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your budget, sir. All right, Mr. Waltney?
Just a little more of the same, I'd like to thank the mayor for an excellent budget, along with the department heads for submitting, um, and working with us to make a budget that's workable for the city, but also thanks to the Finance Committee, and, uh, of course, but not least, Robert and Melody for all of their hard work. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Thames.
Uh, thank you, Robert and Melody, for all your hard work, thank you, Counselor Jones, I apologize for having to remote in for a couple of weeks, but I'm glad to be back in person. Also, uh, just real quick, and I know it's been all night, I'm excited about the, the refunding of the bonds, it really comes in an opportune time, obviously, when we're having to use some carryover fund balance to balance this budget, but the potential of, of, of cashing out over $4 million would obviously more than cover that, although I feel like our revenues are going to recover to where we're not going to need it anyways. But, it's an exciting time, thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Thames, Mr. Higginbotham?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, I, I do just want to echo, um, the praise that has been lavished on Robert and Melody tonight, they certainly well deserved. Um, this, this will be my last budgeting cycle with the council, and I, I can say it has been a very informative experience, and, um, one made so much easier by their knowledge and, um, what they've brought to the process. And I would add, uh, Counselor Jones to that, that group of two that I've been praising. I always have very high, uh, uh, regard for his knowledge of the budget, and have shared that with many people, I've shared it with some of the incoming council people, in fact, I've had discussions, and I said, look, I'm just going to go ahead and tell you, Walter knows the budget backwards and forwards, knows all the funds, and you really need to listen to what he says. So, um, as, as, as I move, move forward in my life here, not, not going to be doing any more budget, I may come and sit in on some budgetary. I did, I did it before I was on the council, so who, heck, who knows, I may come back.
Don't do that to yourself.
Come back and do that again. Um, but I appreciate the opportunity to have gone through that, and it's, it's really an experience that teaches you a lot about the city and how it works, and certainly doing the invoices does the same thing, so, uh, I, I'm glad I've had that opportunity the last four years. I guess that's all I had to say, Mr. Chairman, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Waltney, did you have something else to add, out of order, sir, I might add?
Yes, out of order, my apologies, I would like to set, um, Public Works for, how long do you need, Counselor Jones? Thirty minutes, 5:30.
Public Works at 5:30, Mr. Thames, uh, we did jump over, no P and D?
No P and D.
All right, no P and D. All right, thank you, Mr. Waltney, and Mr. Wolverton?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Um, I also want to echo, um, and lavish praise on Robert and Melody for all the hours that they put into the budget, it's obviously not, not easy trying to make all the numbers work, and there's a lot of moving parts, and you throw in everything from 2020, and it just makes it that much more complicated, and, uh, so I appreciate the, the way that they were able to put, put things together so that it's relatively easy for us to digest and discuss. And then, secondly, I guess, just with, with things, uh, being the way they are, I appreciate the city, you know, taking an abundance of precaution and, and having them just kind of hang tight for a little bit. I know it's probably tough for them, but, um, thank you guys for tuning in tonight, um, over, over Zoom, and helping run the meeting, too. Total, total side note, I don't know if anybody saw the breaking news on Thursday, but the Pac-12 is going to have a football season this year, and, uh.
You guys, you guys.
Yeah.
Yeah, you should be embarrassed.
So Reddit College Football put out a post the other day that said, KJ Costello was a backup quarterback for 4-8 Stanford last year, Mike Leach helmed 6-7 Wazoo. That, they beat defending SEC champ LSU by 10 points, shows how far ahead the Pac-12 is of the SEC. Done.
Yeah.
I don't think the transitive property works there.
That's not worthy of a comment.
But I, but I am glad you brought it up. I'm excited that, I'm, I'm excited that we have some college football back, you know, in whatever form or fashion it is.
We're glad you can come join us in the sandbox, so. All right, Mr. McCluskey?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Wright, um, it is my favorite time of year to hear Walter's recap of the budget, and how excited somebody gets to talk about all the good things that have happened, and I make a joke about it every year, but however many times you have to say five to zero to approve, just, it, again, it's one of my favorite times of the year, so I, I appreciate all the hard work that went into it, that, or went into the budget from the mayor's office, uh, certainly the department heads, Mr. Brigget, Ms. Saltzer, uh, the Finance Committee, and of course, uh, Mr. Jones, and I was really excited to see the, uh, that the, we're going to finish with the surplus, so that the bonuses got paid out as well, that's always a, a huge benefit, and I know the, uh, the city staff and all the departments really appreciate that, um, that we're taking care of the money so that they, uh, will get that benefit at the end, which I think is great. And I will call, uh, Public Safety, and, Mr. Waltney, next time you miss it, I'm taking your early spot. I was, I was, I was, I was ready to jump on it, but it never gets to me before you interrupt, to where I can get that right after Walter's spot, so, I'll take 5:45, and I'll take, uh, 15 minutes for Public Safety.
Hey, um, Mr. McCluskey?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you hear me?
I can.
I didn't even remind you.
You've been in my ear all night.
That is the day before the runoff, yep, but we are, we're still holding committee meetings.
Oh. No, I thought we moved. No, that was last.
Yeah, I mean, as far.
Is there, is there a runoff?
Do we?
Funny, funny, funny.
Do we, do we need to consider moving to, um, putting committees before council on the 12th?
I mean, it's fine with me, I just, I didn't know if anybody had thought about that when Mr. McCluskey got to his, I didn't know whether, I just wanted to try to bring it up.
I would greatly appreciate that.
Yes, um, can, can, can I make a motion to?
You can, um.
To make a motion from the floor?
Actually, I don't think we need a motion, I think we just do it.
Okay.
So, without objection, October 12th will be a fun day, um, let, let me make sure, so, Mr. Waltney, you're okay with that, moving yours, Public Safety, of course, is, so.
Hey, Ms. Saltzer.
Without objection, um, I tell you what, Melody, I'm gonna go ahead and, some, so I want to say that we've had an item on this before.
Does it matter?
Is the city closed now?
Are we closing?
That's why we're asking.
I can't hear, I can't hear you, sir, I'm sorry, what did you say?
Oh, and are we closed on October 12th, Columbus Day?
That's right, we don't, we, you know, that's not a holiday that we get, we don't get Columbus Day.
All right, so let's just do, let's just do it all, I tell you what, let's go ahead and, and do a vote on this, because I, I want to say I've seen this as an item before, I've also seen it, without objection, handled by the president, but, so we're going to go ahead and take a vote, I got a motion to move our October 5th committee, uh, committees to October 12th prior to council, which means, let's do that first, then we'll come back and set these times in just a second. So I got a motion by Ms. Smith, second by Mr. Wyatt, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? Now, back to times, Mr. Jones, are you still going to be at 5:00?
No, I'm going to be at, uh, at 4:30 for 30 minutes.
All right, so Finance is going to be at 4:30. All right, and Public Works will be at 5:00. Public Safety will be at 5:15.
Sounds good.
All right.
And I wanted on the record to know that I was ready to come to work next Monday night, okay?
I'm tired, Mr. Wright, I have to look out for you.
Ms. Saltzer, it's okay, just, uh. I didn't know there was a, I thought the elections were over, so, um, just playing, all right, I, I know, just, just for you two. All right, um, where am I, Mr. Jones?
Just looking at this, it's interesting, for this fiscal year, we passed 151 resolutions.
I know about it, isn't it?
And, and Kendrick knows about it, so, I want to thank you for writing all these, uh, wonderful resolutions, uh, but, and, uh, I, I do want to thank everybody for the, the kind words, I mean, it, it, it is something that I, I, I take pride in, and I'm passionate about, you can tell when I talk about it, uh, because I love the city, and, um, and I appreciate, again, uh, Robert, all your work, uh, and, and Melody, it's, it's, uh, it just makes my job easier, like the mayor said earlier, um, so, I appreciate that, and thank you for the full support of, of the budget, uh, so, uh, Finance will be at 4:30 on the 12th.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, Mrs. Smith?
Thank you, Dr. Jones, for always being so great to work with.
Thank you.
Um, I will set, uh, special issues for 5:30, so hopefully we'll have a little bit of a cushion before council starts at 6:00. And, um, I gushed about, uh, Mr. Jones, so I will gush about, uh, Robert and Melody, we would not get any of this done, uh, without them, and, uh, I hate that they're not here in person to, so we can tell them that, but, um, this would not happen if it weren't for the two of them working countless hours on weekends and at nights to get this all done. So, I appreciate them greatly.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Smith.
Thank you all very much, that means a lot, thank you, really, really, really. Uh, I, I've been so depressed about not being able to come today, I'm the only one that, like, gets depressed when I can't come to work.
Thank you, Melody, um, Mr. Wyatt?
I'm going to sound a little bit like a broken record, but, uh, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Mr. Jones, uh, I, I just can't fathom how we would get through this without you, I think Mr. Harden put it well, and said there's, it's easy to do this when you've got a professional running the show, so, uh, thank you for that. Thank you to Melody and Robert, a, a few weeks ago, I, I gave them their, what is apparently their favorite statement, because they keep repeating it to me, that I admitted that we have given them an obscene amount of work, um, and so, uh, we've now given them, we, I apparently thought that wasn't enough, so now we've given them the challenge of doing that same amount of work remotely. Uh, so, um, thank you for not only all that you've done, uh, over the course of the past month, and even the past couple of months, but, uh, now doing it remotely, uh, we really appreciate that, and appreciate everything that you do, uh, I agree with Mrs. Smith, I, none of this happens without you, and, and it's, I, I don't even want to think about what that would look like, so, uh, thank you again.
Uh, thank you, thank you all, appreciate it.
Mr. Wyatt, can I say one thing?
Yes, please, Mr. Brigget.
I, I think I have finally found Melody Saltzer's limit. I have failed to deceive her so hard on this, and she was so tired yesterday, I saw her actually reach her limit, I never thought I'd see that.
We, we appreciate you sharing that publicly.
Yeah.
Well, in my, in my defense, it was, uh, working so hard because there was a possibility I wasn't going to be able to come to work, and so that was so distraught, I'm the only person that gets distraught about being told I may not get to come to work, uh, even if I'm going to get paid, so, I, I'm saying that was a caveat, because normally, I wouldn't have reached it. That was, that was a contributing factor.
Thank you both, thank you both. Ms. Andrews?
So, Melody, you mean, getting your MBA, going through a runoff election during a pandemic, and passing a budget? Robert, you saying that's Melody's limit, we've actually found it, that's it?
I, I, I think I've seen, probably, I'm probably wrong, she probably can dig down and find more, but I think I've actually seen the limit.
If you, if you told me she was also nursing again in the background, you know, doing her nursing overnight in, in, you know, the hospital, I would believe you. We love you, we thank you both, we wish y'all were here in person, and we could take you down to SoHo Social and have a socially-distanced, uh, adult beverage to celebrate you, um, but thank you also to Walter and the Finance Committee, and, um, anyway, our department